We need someone to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes for Thursday, March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the motion carries, any questions on the purchase order?
The replacement of the HVAC.
Going to mention that when we rehabbed that house for the caretaker two summers ago, that was the original, the, the original unit was there and had been set outside and hadn't been running for a while. Mike and, and his employees rehabbed it, but it just, it just went down and we couldn't fix it.
I thought maybe it was vandalism.
No, no, so it was just an old unit that needed to be replaced, so that will just replace, I want to bring that to your attention. And that building now is in really good shape, other than towards the end of the summer, if it's been a really dry summer. We have, we have some issues with the pump, I don't know, the well's not deep enough. But other than that, it appears that things are pretty good order down there and it has paid dividends having that caretaker there.
Yeah, yeah, everything cleaned up with the cooperation.
Been cleaned up, Sheriff's Department has been very cooperative and we have not gotten.
One complaint.
The complaint, so the other thing I want to point out is on your very last page, you'll see a, a payment for fencing, for the Dunn Building at Council President Co. Taver's direction. Our Facilities Department working with Anthony tore the, that old wooden fence that was to, to the side of the water tower, kind of by Raleigh Street, they tore all that out.
Kind of leaning up.
Put chain link fence with black privacy slats in it and then our facilities guys, they had some piping. They cut the pipe off, filled the pipes with concrete and then planted the pipes in the ground, concrete pipes in the ground.
Boyers.
So if you look to the, to that parking lot there by Raleigh Street, it's been cleaned up, really looks nice. And they put the fence high enough so that when we have the parking lot repaved as part of the Dunn Building renovations, we can paint re.
And the other thing, Dan, I noticed one morning is to clean it down, there's graffiti on our wall back here where IT is.
Okay.
That's opened up now, since they cleaned it up, we need to paint that wall.
Okay.
There's a camera right there, so we'll, we'll have to, if it gets graffitied up again, we'll have to make sure we catch them.
Yeah, if you look from Raleigh Street straight down the back of the building, you can see it back there. But I did notice that yesterday actually driving by, I thought, wow, the fences were really good.
It looked so much nicer.
One of the things we was trying to do, and I don't think we made headway yet, but was to piggyback the City of Markburg about the painting the water tower on the exterior.
We got a price last week.
Did we? Okay.
Two hundred thousand.
Which ain't bad.
Well, and it's higher than what we expected from, and it's piggybacking on the City Mart's first contract. Because it's a residential area, they actually are going to have to tar it bit and scrape it and then paint it, so two hundred, two hundred thousand.
That's not too bad considering we priced one, the big one down at the VA Center for a job, it was a hundred eighty something thousand, that was several years ago.
Now, we're waiting for clarification if the painting includes putting Berkeley County with our new seal on it before I bring it to you. But we got that last week.
Right, which reminds me, back about four years ago, we was going to redo the seal on the courthouse at one hundred and it's in really bad shape now.
Okay.
So we need to get somebody to do it, if we can pull, I don't know if it's a, if it's an attachment, we pull it off, somebody to paint on the ground?
Well, we've ordered all the new seals for inside and on the exterior of this building for unveiling on our anniversary. We also discovered that West Virginia code requires that the circuit court rooms have the state of West Virginia seals in it and not Berkeley County seals. So where we've ordered new seals for the courtroom, so we can follow, I can follow up with it.
Well, the one on the courthouse, I was getting ready to say, I wonder if we can't just get some type of a, well, laminated, something laminated.
Shouldn't that be a state funded thing if they're requiring it?
Adhere to.
You mean the courthouse?
It's probably your seventy-five thousand dollar allocation.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll, I'll follow up.
All right. Okay, any other questions on the purchase order? No internal budget revisions, change of status pending, you'll probably have to help me on these, new hire recommendation received from Jen Swisher, nine-one-one director for Rodina Miller, Heather Grassstaff, Destiny Howe, Megan Pantalini. And Jason Neely as telecommunicators with an annual salary of forty thousand three ten effective April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
They will be in our next call taker place.
Right. We have a change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for William Carpenter. He is going from a recovery technician to a SBRIT case manager for Recovery Resource Center. His salary will be going from thirty-seven thousand five hundred and nine dollars to forty-four thousand sixty-six dollars effective March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. And by the way, did, I guess Tim got a, a tour of the, the building that we bought there in the parking lot?
He did.
It's going to be.
Says that he thinks it's too cut out.
Even for temporary purposes, all right.
He said he'll be good until July of two thousand twenty-three, that's when you do the service. That doesn't give us much time.
No. All right, we have approval managed for March third, two thousand twenty-two, everyone was present, any corrections or changes to those and March tenth? County council calendars will be here next Thursday. And nothing special there, boards of commissions, we have five PM tonight, we have library board, five PM Ambass Authority. On Monday, the twenty-eighth, four PM historical landmarks, five PM water district, any changes or corrections on those?
Mr. President, if I may, if you'll recall, we did receive approval of our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three levy last week, I think I sent you all comments of that. As part of that discussion, there was some preliminary discussion regarding some supplemental funding. I've just had some tentative discussion, do you want that scheduled as a, an item on your regular agenda? Or do you want special meeting set up to discuss that?
Somehow or another, I didn't hear a word he said, I was going through the, it's started over, I saw it.
The supplemental funding request that we received from, you know, you senior services as an example, do you want that as discussion as part of your regular agenda? Or do you want special sessions set up?
It's made a part of the regular.
Let's do it in an afternoon.
We can.
Okay. You did receive, just so you know, and I don't know if I've mentioned it or not, as part of the senior services supplemental request, it, it came to my attention, you probably knew about it before. it came to my attention, you probably knew about it before I, even though I did not, that the kitchen did not have any heat or air conditioning.
At the senior services?
Yeah.
No, I didn't know that.
I did not know that either.
It came as a surprise to me as well.
But it's been addressed. We had many splits put in.
Okay.
So that's been taken care of, we, it also came to our attention that the basement floor, the flooring has not been replaced for a while and must have been pretty, pretty bad shape. We're in the process, we got the first quote for new flooring down there yesterday, we're waiting for two more. So we, it is our building and we've already put over a million dollars in it, it doesn't make sense for us to.
So there's a, there's a grinder pump in the basement of that building and apparently the seals had failed and backed up a few times and it was cleaned and addressed, but carpet was.
So are we taking a luxury vinyl or something?
We've got a double, it's a luxury vinyl in the floor, in the halls and the offices will have a carpet square.
Carpet squares.
But the many splits are in and operational.
So is the grinder pump big enough to put two different pumps in, the cycle?
I don't know, I don't know, but that's, they, yeah, it failed and.
That's another thing we need to do too, if you could.
I don't think it's got a wireman on it either, and I said something to Jack about that, that he should, it should have a wireman on it.
I think we, I guarantee that we haven't been cycling those pumps over to Judicial Center. It probably would be a bad idea to pull the ones that haven't been used and have them worked on, freshened up because it's been eleven years now. And then things go down, that's, that's trouble because they run all the time.
That fits real quick, Joe.
Yeah, when I first got here, you pull them.
So you taught me that.
Uh huh.
Came in on Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, they dock, but yeah, if they need, if they need something to get them out, they just have to let me know or call Crane or something.
How deep are they? How deep are they?
They're not, they're, they're just set down in that, the whole building's in a boat, so they sit down, down in a hole, so behind that big concrete wall in the parking lot and then on the east side, there's two more. And the ones on the east side usually don't run, so you know darn well they freeze up bearings and all that stuff. But they were supposed to be cycled and I'm thinking, I'm thinking they did get, being used to cycle, but the ones on the east side, if they're not being used, they ain't going to, they're going to start, they'll freeze up.
Then they'll start tossing breakers.
Yeah, and then the water will come in. All right, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion been made, do we have a second, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Boarding meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a local government advisory committee to the Chesapeake Democratic Council meeting Thursday and Friday, that's where I was, in case you didn't miss me.
We didn't know how to close out the meeting.
Still going on.
We started looking at everybody, each of us, and we said, Jim's out here.
Both of them.
Yeah.
So it was the usual meeting of various sundry people coming up, some of them were interesting, some of them were Department of Defense funding opportunities, which, huh? But I did mention our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, got no reaction, but you know, there. That one, that was a Zoom meeting and it was a buy, the actual, and Zoom, I attended Zoom because I wanted about to go to Annapolis, Maryland. Yeah, and the next one's in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, so I don't know, I'm going to Annapolis.
Oh, you ought to go to.
Yeah, I might.
Bring back some, bring back some good.
Take who?
Make the woman one. You caught me. Then Monday I had a board of health meeting, the, of course, COVID is down like ninety percent, so they're starting to get a handle on that. They still don't have a nurse, they are requesting the state relax the requirements for nurses for salary. And it was not even getting any application, people are simply not interested in thirty-seven thousand dollars or whatever, when they can make a hundred thousand dollars.
And even more if you're traveling nurse.
Oh, yeah. So that was my meeting.
Joe, answer something for me, who, who made it, who made it law that large gatherings have to be approved by the health department?
Well, it's the, the state has the regulations, it's the county.
When did that change? Because we, we've never had to, the whole while I was in the Home Builders Association, never had to do it, and this year they had to have a.
Mask gathering permit?
Yeah, have, have a mask gathering permit from the health department because of COVID, it's a.
Has the governor ever released the state of emergency?
I think so, yeah.
It might have come under that.
The mask gathering, that's probably, that's five years.
What's considered a mask, do you know the number?
Well, it'd be something, you're in a youth fair, Shelly Acres, yeah, something like that.
Crab feed.
Eh, I don't know about the crab feed.
How about the, I don't think we had one from the St. Patrick's Day and.
Never had one from the wine festival.
Huh, no, we never did.
All right, Mr. Delie.
What's the penalty?
Don't do it again.
They sent you to Ukraine for.
Ukraine. Okay. The, had a Main Street Martinsburg meeting, discussed the next event, which is the wine festival coming up in, in Boysville. They had, they continue to outdo themselves, or we, you, I guess I'm part of that, continued to outdo themselves with the, with these, with these events we're having. So this event did better than any event we've ever had, Main Street Martinsburg, yeah, which is good because they, you know, Robbie got in, he, he got the position and coming up with new ideas and working towards, towards events and, you know, a different thinking. Not that Randy was, you know, did anything wrong, but Robbie's a younger, different kind of thought process and, and what's going on is going really good. So I believe the thought process is moving forward, we're going to go ahead and seek another employee. They asked me if I knew anybody that was good at writing job descriptions.
Nobody.
And they said that they were, they were in the process of trying to figure out how to put that job description together. I said, I know a guy that's really good at it.
You don't call me.
Huh?
You don't call me.
No, I, I was going to mention it to you first before.
It'll cost you large, but.
The, but, but he's, he's continuing to hit it out of the park, he's doing really well. Looking forward to the, looking forward to the wine event. That, that should be a lot of fun, due to the, the governor's office and the legislature did change, legislature did change some, some regulations a couple of years ago for that event, but it's still so, so encumbersome to, for an out-of-state venue to get into Berkeley County. What's, what's the word that they use, rest, was it reciprocity?
Reciprocity.
Reciprocity, yeah, and, and we're doing that on, we're doing that on licensing for HVAC and, and contractors licensing and, and plumbing and electrical licensing, those type of things, which are.
But we should only do it with the states though, it would be reciprocity to us if, for people in business going to their state, no other state. If they don't allow it, then we shouldn't allow it to them.
Well, and I think what we're doing right now is just border states, isn't it? I think it's just, right now, it's just Maryland and West Virginia that we're allowing, and I guess in Ohio, I guess all the way around, right?
Yeah.
But I think it's just border states is what they, that's got it, but, but if we're doing it that, for that, why aren't we doing it for wineries and, you know, to, for vineyards and distilleries and those type of things that have licenses to be able to do the same thing? So, I don't, that's my thought, you know, we'll see how that goes.
I'd say the legislative summit. A good item for legislative summit.
Yeah, yeah. It, it just, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to go through a total licensing for a, a one-day event, doesn't make sense. And it's unfortunate too, because it would bring, it would, it would knock that out of the park for that event because then you have those people to follow, those out-of-state wineries to come to our community and spend money on, you know, gas and lunch and, you know, maybe even, maybe hotel, motel, so. Had a, I had two meetings yesterday, I was burning a brush pile and could not leave, so I was kind of stuck there. Did, did have a, did have a conversation with Amy afterwards, she called me up and they, the board decided to, if, well, they didn't evaluate her, they just evaluated the situation and gave her a ten percent raise yesterday. So, yeah, that was good, she, she hasn't received a raise since she'd been there, so that's good. And everything else was not working normally there, so there was nothing for her to really give me much of an update on, other than, you know, some events coming up. They postponed the, they had a, where the staff serves a meal, that was in, set up for next month and now it's moved to May. Have that to look forward to, I think that'll be fun, I've never done that.
All right, Mr. Wiger.
There was two meetings, I was unable to attend either one of them, so shame on me.
All right.
You were in another country.
Another world, yeah.
Mr. Coconer.
Yes, sir, planning commission, where once again we had a very active. Six public hearings and the planners were very busy. I know Laura and Monique both have approximately seventy different projects in their commute right now, some large and some small. But that's, that's a pretty heavy workload for them to get through in a timely manner, you know, sort of everybody's projects, meet your deadlines and stuff like that.
Yeah, ran into Jim Hutzle this morning, asking how business was, and he said it's crazy, yeah, just from PC to Magnus. There are all these sketch plans and all this kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I think anybody in this county that wants to be busy is extremely busy right now. And I did have a steward board meeting that I was not able to attend. I and my wife attended the distinguished citizen ceremony for our own Mr. Stubblefield. It was a very, very nice evening and privileged to be able to go to that. It was a big fundraiser for the Boy Scouts as well, I think that's the primary function of that event, but being able to recognize Mr. Stubblefield was, was very, very nice.
I did miss mention that, I went out there on Saturday to the, the gathering to kick off that, kick off that agreement with Bill Stubblefield and the Stubblefield Institute and, or Boy Scouts and Clint Hoggland was out there. It was, it was a, it was a good conversation out there. Actually, I went to, a friend of mine was celebrating his ninety-fourth birthday at the airport that morning before that, so I went out there and.
That distinguished citizen is?
And that's my, my friend Bob Butler.
Butler, yes, indeed.
He was out there, his, his birthday is on the first day of spring. He's doing good, he looked good, he looked good, he had, had his daughters out there and grandson out there, a couple other people, his brother was out there, so it was, yeah, they were having, having breakfast. But I, I had to go by there and wish him happy birthday.
You have anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything to report on right now. All right, we're going into the bed opening RFP, comprehensive HVAC utility management service agreement, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, believe it or not, Berkeley County has now owned the Blue Ridge Outlet complex for twenty years. January of two thousand and two was moved, we formally took title to it. We dedicated the Dunn Building after renovation during two sixteen, two thousand and five, and then dedicated the Judicial Center in October sixth of two thousand and six. Since then, we have made and continue to make upgrades, not only to the buildings, but also to the complex as I mentioned, the chemical properties and then most recently bought the old City National Bank building, which was ours to begin with. Over the past several years, we upgraded the boilers, the one boiler that services the Judicial Center as well as the boiler here and then we put the, the original unit in the back. The units that are currently on the roof of the Judicial Center, there are, well, but there was Gary, plus units, are the, the original units. And you can imagine over the past seventeen, sixteen, seventeen years, they've taken a pretty good beating and, and are nearing end of life. And then when we had that power surge a couple of months ago, sustained additional damages. This is all part of the, the maintenance on the, the monitoring and, and maintenance of the systems that we have and also looking forward to the upgrades that are going to be needed for the Judicial Center and the upgrades that we hope to recommend to the council regarding some of our, our technology, migration to LED lighting and, and some things like that. As part of those upgrades, we'll also be looking at five-ten South Raleigh Street, which is the Sheriff's Department. I know we dedicated that building in March of two thousand and fourteen. Unfortunately, the HVAC system has never really been up to par, is that a fair assessment, Gary? So we'll be looking at the Judicial Center technology.
It's up to par, it's just not as efficient as we can be today, is that a good statement?
So this is all part of that process of moving forward and so this is just for, this is just a service agreement to help with the HVACA and utility management as we move forward. It was, it was advertised in the Martinsburg Journal, we do have certification, publication file indicating that the ad appeared on Friday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was also mandatory pre-bait conference at eleven o'clock A M. On Friday, March the fourth. We had two different vendors attend and their attendance is duly noted. A bid for, due no later than four o'clock P M. On Wednesday, March twenty-third. We received one bid prior to the deadline and that vendor, Bolin Company, had attended the pre-bait conference. So Gary, can you add a little bit more about what we, what we're looking for and what we hope to do as we go forward?
Again, one thing to note, we are at the end of our five-year service contract on the buildings for our full service maintenance. You, you went through this duration, you had a one-year contract with four out-years. Our, we're in the middle of our last out-year and then in October. This proposal should include services to continue us to be supported as we are now with out-years moving forward. It should also have in it a, a, a à la carte option for us to buy technical and support services to do some of the renovations that we spoke of. There's federal contracts for us to buy the equipment on, your legal team has already looked and we, we do have the opportunity to buy that stuff as Mr. Davis alluded to and much as the council looked at when we did. alluded to. And much as the council looked at when we did the boilers, remember, we replaced 16 million BTUs with 8 million constant, 24 hours a day, 65 days a year, with a high-efficiency boiler that is 6 million BTU that can ramp clear down to 200,000 BTU, instantly sold just about $2,500 a month savings in gas, month one. That was ridiculous.
Not counting electric.
Not counting the electric. And then, then you took, as Mr. Davis said, you, you eliminated a 300-ton 18 compressor unit that sat out back to cool this building, created chill water. It had probably about $200,000 worth of deferred maintenance that needed done to it. You replaced it with a new high-efficiency chiller with ice storage, partial ice storage. So, we have about 300 tons of cooling out back. At any given summer day, be it 75 or 110, we don't run a compressor when it's hot outside. We live on ice the entire workday. We make ice at night when the ambient's gone, the sun's gone, as cool as we can get. Hopefully someday, the, the market of Western Virginia open up and we can actually have different, different cost for our electric. Right now, it's the same. It doesn't much matter. There's some peak stuff, but other than that, you are really driven towards efficiency. This also should include opportunities for us to do with our controls and retrofit our lighting. We've got it now in here. It's not controlled, but this, these are the similar units that you can see. With added controls, we can take an incandescent, replace it with an LED, and immediately reduce it to 80%, and none of our eyes will see it. So, we can not, we, we all know how efficient LED are as compared to the other stuff that we had, or fluorescence, or whatever it may be. Then we can cut another 20% off that. And then with controls, we have the ability to say, okay, the sun's moving from the east to the west side of the building. Now we can, instead of needing 80% of this light, now we only need 60% of light. The computer system does it all. So, as we continue to leverage cost savings and reduction in cost to help offset the expense, the return on investment for this stuff, payback, we hope, is seven to 10 years, just like it was in the boilers and the chiller. So, the money makes sense. This is just laying the groundwork for us to move forward.
Do you want the labor rates and the supplement services read too?
I would think for purposes of the, of the, we could probably summarize those in the review.
That's what I was thinking.
Maybe just the service contract and then what should be read into the answer.
The bid that we have, the only bid that we have is Bolden Training Services out of Gathersburg, Maryland. Their, I guess it would be called their Service Comprehensive HVAC and Utility Management Services Agreement is $159,895. And it's broken down, there's more buildings than what we've been discussing. That would be the Dunn Building, which is all new stuff for $26,921. The Judicial Building, which has the old HVAC units, is $101,024. Central Dispatch, which has all new stuff, is $23,412. David Port Center, which is all new stuff, is $8,208. And the Courthouse Water Treatment, when they say courthouse, they mean the Judicial Center? $960.
If all of those numbers sound like they're in mind, doesn't sound like as much increase of what we're paying now. They sound really good. The Dunn Building, we still have a maintenance contract on the equipment here. That's what that is. The only new addition to that would be the David Port Center.
Doesn't have anything, doesn't have anything about 510 on there, though.
We don't have, there is no service agreement on 510 at all. We maintain those, those, those are light commercial. We maintain those are separate. Yeah. The, the part of that document will blend into 510 will be the, the display rates for replacement and stuff like that.
And this is a one-year contract again with the option for four additional out-years at the councils.
Right. But it would always, it would change as we upgrade.
Yes, sir.
That closes the bed, and actually, everything was advertised and certified and all that stuff, Mr. Davis?
That comes out of the court, the court budget?
No, actually comes out of IT's budget.
That's why I got the budget so long.
The controls piece comes out of, you know, IT, but any, any hard, any hardware that we buy will come out of Courthouse.
So, so that being a reoccurring expense every year, it's, it's, it's already logged in. Does that make sense to have that in the, in the IT department?
Yeah, because of the technical aspect of it.
So, so have we ever done, have we ever taken the time to do, and, and I don't need, you're good, you're good. That's his question, I guess. Have we ever taken the time to do an analysis on the life expectancy of these units and, and, in each building? And, and not only that, but, you know, the life expectancy, you know, on more aspects like furniture and, and flooring and those types of things to create, to create? And we talked about this several years ago when I first came into council about creating a magnets budget that allows to gather some money. Are we allowed to put something in a budget like that that will gather money so that there's an account for when this chiller has to be replaced, for example?
No. We have, we, we, we've discussed it, but no, we have not put there, put together a schedule like that.
Right. Are we allowed to do that and carry money over for something like that?
Sure. We can set up a special, special account, almost like a quality of life account, something like that. We could, we could earmark that as building maintenance. I mean, we, we've done, for example, health insurance. That's how we've built up our reserves over the years for health insurance expenses. So, we could do the exact same thing.
I mean, I, I think it makes sense, because these, these systems that we're putting in, although they're going to, you know, they're going to pay back with the efficiencies they are, the cost of these things are normal. And if, if we're not setting something aside each year for the, the 15-year life expectancy of these units, that somebody's going to get hit down the road 15 years from now when we're not here. Somebody's going to get a blast and say, wow.
You make a good point, because as we come to you in the next month or so, with the, with the suggested upgrades to the Judicial Center and our, our lighting system, it's going to be to the tune of eight to 10 million. So, I mean, it's a big, it's a big ticket item.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I mean, what, we, we should be, we should be looking at that now and having some type of, I think, I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but I think there should be, you know, for, for those general, I mean, there, there's no doubt they're going to wear out. We know right now that the, what the life expectancy of these units is. You know, we know that, you know, the, you know, the furniture, chairs, I mean, all that stuff is going to, you know, is going to wear out as time goes on. So, why would we not have something to set aside that was gathering so that when it comes an issue, there's money sitting right there to be able to pay for it? Just my thought.
That'd be millions of dollars.
Yeah, we don't have enough money to replace you, Jim.
All right. All right. Next on our agenda is Tracy Gillums, Grant Administrator, Matthew Umstead, Director of Policies and Strategic Planning, West Virginia Culture and Capital Resources Grant. Good morning to each and every one of you.
This grant is a West Virginia cultural facility. It's a state grant. We're applying for the roof at 110 West Keene Street. The grant request is $175,000. It's 50% match at $175,000 for the purpose to place a new roof at 110 West Keene Street, which would establish, which would be Phase One, to establish an ECA accessible public museum in visitor center, climate-controlled spaces and artifact displays and storage, programming, administration, and archival research.
All right. Just one second. So, I guess we need to get Gary to start involved in the HVAC and stuff for that 110 before we put the roof on. I mean, if we get the grant. We're going to have to do it anyway.
Well, you're going to have a lot of activity down there anyway. We talked briefly this morning about the demolition of 126 and the removal of the drive-through roof and the ATP, the automated teller that's there. So, yes, we'll.
Want to coordinate those, too. I'm sorry. I'm getting old enough where I have to, when I, something comes to me, I got to talk about it because I lose it so quickly.
Yeah, that's a, that's a recent thing.
All right.
Got a comment, but I'll wait till the whole board.
Oh, y'all jump on the wagon. Go ahead. All right. So, and you all want for us to make a motion to adopt, to apply for the grant, right?
Yeah. There's, there's also Randall, who's been here two weeks, definitely for a purpose. Actually, Randall's going to be here for multiple days. We're having, we're planning a special lunch first. So, that's actually. So, there's an order in your packet also that we ask that you consider and adopt so that we can get to Randall.
Yeah, my daughter, you wrote this thing, you know?
Yes, I wrote the order. I drafted the order. And basically, consulting with Tracy and grant application, this, by creating this entity on paper at this point in time, not taking any further action at this time, but by, by creating this and putting this, incorporating this into the application for the grant, it gives us a lot more, I should say, I don't know about a lot, but it definitely gives us leverage.
Gives you a structure that we need, too.
Right. It, it tells the state that we're serious about this, you know, we're putting a structure in place on how to move forward, and it complements the application in a great, in a great way. So, I would highly recommend that we do at least establish this for now and then work on, you know, actually forming the actual commission, the drawls, input, feedback, and direction. It definitely goes toward the application. Tracy can speak more about that if you, if you will.
Go ahead, Tracy, please. We forgot the application.
Application has been very lengthy and difficult. This is probably one of the, one of the harder grants I've worked on in two years. All the other ones seem very easy.
Amazing. You know, I've been lost on the first grant you wrote.
But this, with that order for, for a museum commission, makes it seem like we're not just asking, hey, can you replace this roof down the road? We're going to put in a museum. This gives it a little bit of leverage and that, you know, we have things in place that this is what, what we're going to do in different phases. And I kind of have it broke down into phases, that the roof being one of the most important things, that we have to start with the roof.
Right.
And then, but then also getting other people in the community involved for the artifacts.
And we have a conceptual drawing, as, as you know, received last week.
Just something really quick. Right.
Something to start with.
All right. So, right now, we need to approve and move forward the application. And so, we need a motion to move forward the application to the West Virginia History and Cultural, or Cultural and Capital Resource Grant.
I make a motion that we approve the grant request for half a match of $175 for the total project, $350,000 for roof repair.
Roof replacement.
Roof replacement and ADA accessible public museum for Brooklyn County Vision.
I have a motion on floor, second. That motion's $175,000. But, all, all in favor, any discussion, I should say. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And then we need a, a motion to adopt the, adopt the order or approve the, which one, Anthony?
Yeah, two, best thing. End of the word, establish the museum.
Motion on floor, second. Any further discussion on that?
How many members in all the council?
Yes, it does.
Nine. Creates a nine-member board. It does prescribe in there that the members of the board have a level of experience, it's verifiable with various facets.
County Council has an ex officio or?
The county council would be ex officio and invite the neighboring counties and municipalities of the eastern part of West Virginia, which is Berkeley, Jefferson, Morgan County. They're also nominated or appointed an ex officio as well to contribute to, in a collaborative arrangement. It, it really follows the original boundary of Berkeley County, which is all the vision of the museum to be.
The reason why, the reason that would be is because we want to be recognized as a regional, which is going to give us.
Leverage.
Leverage and clout.
Right. Really, just to go real, real brief into it, just one of the, one of the very basic things is to create an umbrella website that basically allows for all the different community and heritage organizations to have a clearinghouse where you can go to one-stop shop, so to speak, and a visitor can register a tour of all the different sites across the three counties. And that's just one facet.
And one of the good things about what we're trying to do here at 110 is to attract downtown traffic, you know?
Be a tremendous quality of life improvement for education, children, tours for the kids, research projects, publication.
With the library.
Right.
And the historic courthouse and the store, a lot.
The library has been consulted with. The leadership of the library has been, we've had substantial discussions about collaboration with them, CBB, as we, as Tracy touched upon. We've also reached out to the Landmarks Commission as well, and this local society as well. And all of the heritage groups in the county have been contacted about this, including the Sons of the American Revolution, the Daughters of the American Revolution, every single agency or organization, I should say, has been contacted. And they all have indicated support.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Just to let people know, I do check up on things once in a while. I'm back, but just want to thank you for understanding. You went out on the town and met with some historical groups and at their board, board meetings. And, you know, just to let the council know that you're not an eight-to-five person, you know? You go out at nights and talk to these people and then give them updates on what's going on.
I try to keep everybody involved. I do have one quick thing to pass off to each one of you.
And Mr. President, he's, that's not, that's not new to him. He's been doing that. And I, I know that it's, it's been very well received. You know, I know for a fact, like the Morgan Cabin Association, he met with them, you know, he discussed, you know, in particular, the 250th birthday, you know, those things, you know, it's not a nine-to-five. And he follows up, you know, with that meeting, which, like I said, was very well received. And then recently, I think, we'll walk, interact with him. And, yeah, thank you, Matt.
Absolutely.
So, so I had a conversation with a couple of, with a few individuals from different, different boards here in the county over the weekend. And I was thinking about the Irish event that we had downtown. And I was thinking about the history in Martinsburg, which we have enormous amount. There's so much history in Martinsburg, I couldn't even begin to scratch the surface of what there is. And, or, I mean, I know the Adam Stevens House, but I don't know the whole history and, you know, everything behind it. I know, you know, Boydville, those type of things. So, so I said, why aren't we doing what every other place does that I go visit? If I go to Nashville, I get on the bus and I ride around and it, it has an automated storyteller. Yeah, that, that goes through, and then they stop it and the, you know, the, the character that's driving the bus, ad-libs, a little bit of witty information back and forth. And so, I said, why don't we create something with the Roundhouse? Because the Roundhouse owns the trolley, the CBB, which has, should be able to possibly give us a grant to start the whole project, the Historic Society, to be able to come up with some video, you know, all of that, or some audio, all of that together. And then the Transit Authority would have to be involved, Main Street. I mean, when we have these events downtown, why not have that? And, and it could be, as we create this museum, it could be something that, you know, Saturday at 12 o'clock, this, this trolley makes a run around, or something like that, so that people that come to our area could, could enjoy the history and find out. So that people that come to our area could, um, could enjoy the history and find out what, what really there is here in this community.
The, the premise of the museum commission, you're absolutely, you make excellent points and I agree with most, if not all, of what you said. Uh, the museum commission is aimed at collaboration. And by, with the appointments, the key, the very important appointments that are made to that commission, hopefully will, uh, in, inspire collaboration. And, and working with all the different parties you mentioned there. And, uh, and obviously, it also, under the state law, and I'll review this with Anthony, uh, it allows for admission collections and charging the museum commission can, can charge admissions. So there's an umbrella there to kind of facilitate some of the features that you're talking about. And looking in collaboration with the various heritage groups, the exact same proposal you're talking about as far as a trolley tour is very possible, I think. Much more reachable, much more reachable than maybe what it's, at least from the outset, looking at maybe, uh, as viewed, but I, I think it's very reachable. In fact, one of our projects that we're still working on was development of a audio recording, uh, using Bluetooth technology on the trolley bus. To, to, to in fact, offer that as a, as one of the events, uh, this year. Uh, however, is, it's an enormous undertaking in its own and, uh, it's taking a little more time than we had anticipated.
Matt, there was a group during, and I kept it up the charts on my desk, there was a group in here during the budget cycle that said that they did have a, um, a social media page to go, be able to take you through, at least the spots.
Right.
You aware of that one?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's tours that you can take, I'm not aware of that one.
I'll try to find it, so we can have you to research it out.
Yeah, I think that, I think that could be further, I mean, once you put that audio together, now that audio can be something that somebody just downloads and can do it on their own as well.
And they can just play.
Or a bicycle.
Or the bicycle, right.
Bicycle, right. On regular ways.
No, I mean, it, it seemed, I had a conversation with a few members of a couple of different boards and they all thought it was a great idea, which it clearly isn't my idea. Just to thought that, hey, it's, it's happening somewhere else, why aren't we doing it here?
There's no need to reinvent the wheel.
Exactly.
Mr. President, are we going to ask Matt to reach out to Jefferson County and Long Island County and all the municipalities or get something, administration or? Well, as soon as we can get him on board or at least informed, uh, more successful we'll be.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't interrupt. The April first luncheon is, is very much an outreach luncheon. Um, curator is going, he wants these parties from Jefferson, who are going to actually be in the room. And, and we have done some initial outreach, uh, and we're having a breakfast twenty-seven downtown. And, uh, the curator is, uh, is going to be there and we've invited a couple of people involved, Morgan and Jefferson County, key, key people, uh, just a very small group right now. To kind of discuss collaboration, bringing people together on this. So I just, very informal, didn't want to involve anyone right now, just until we get these parties together and get some really good vibe in the room, so to speak. I hate to say it that way, but, you know, sometimes you gotta, you know, um, I don't know how to say it the right way, but I've lost words, but sometimes you gotta do a little diplomacy. And so that's what this is, only of course, a little diplomacy, to try to get some people to kind of say, hey, this is a good thing. And I've gotten positive feedback from both Morgan and Jefferson about the general idea of, of more heritage tourism collaboration, so that's really what this is about.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Matt. Thank you. Tracy, real quick, uh, before we take a break, is there any activity on board and commission vacancies?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make an appointment of, um, Chip Leatherman to the Airport Authority Board.
Motion on floor, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye, or any discussion on that, I should say.
Uh, is that a new term or can I explain it?
It's a new term.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Anything else?
Good, everybody? Alright, let's take a break and we'll come back.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Nancy Strain, CDBG and Home Administrator. Excuse me, the City of Martinsburg Public Hearing Physical Year 2022 Home Investment Partnership Program. You want to enlighten us again, Nancy, please?
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's always a pleasure to come here. This is actually our fourth and last, well, not last public hearing, but I have to add one more.
Let me go ahead and make a motion and go ahead and then to open the public hearing, just so.
Okay, sure.
So I need a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we're all.
Just for the record, it was properly advertised and publication.
All right.
We missed that from you last week.
Yeah, when you wasn't here, Mr. Mine didn't do that, and then he had to go back. Now, my boss would say this, so I better say this.
Rookie mistake.
It was.
He actually said you would say that.
I would.
All right, Ms. Strain.
Okay, thanks. So this is our fourth public hearing. I've been to Morgan, Jefferson, and then you. Usually I start out with you all, so I ended up, so then I can give you the huge funds together and the city. So we've begun the process to prepare our one-year annual plan for the use of these funds and to receive public input. Home is the largest federal block grant program to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. The city has, Martinsburg has been participating with the home program since 2007. We have received 6.6 million in housing assistance for the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, Jefferson County, and Morgan County. And as you know, we predominantly do the first-time home buyers program. And this past year, creating gap financing for people to purchase their first home. This past year, we did 22 first-time home buyers in the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan. Last year it was 25. We did 12 in Berkeley County, up from the year before, the year before it was 10. Then six in the city of Martinsburg. There's a lot of activity in the city of Martinsburg. Last year there was three. Four in Jefferson. Last year there was 10 over there. And then there wasn't any activity in Morgan. Last year there was two. We're having some problems with the affordability of the houses that investors are going in and buying a lot of the housing stuff. Historically, we have assisted 328 first-time home buyers in the Eastern Panhandle. Our 4.5 million F-HAP loans has leveraged 43 million in home sales and 39 million in first mortgage loans. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about the 12, because I know you always like to know. The houses range from 140,000, 170,000, 172,146 in Enwood, 155,000 and 160,000 in Hedgesville. Two houses actually went for 165,000, 183,000, and 211,806 throughout the county. So the highest home this time was 211,000. I checked. Medium sales prices for Berkeley County is now going at 299,000. The HUD allowable housing cost for existing homes is 196,000. And for new construction, it's 243,000, and this is just in Berkeley County. We actually have $260,128 available in the HAP loan fund for Berkeley County.
So Nancy, we've had this discussion before, since Jefferson County only done fours to 10 last year, and Morgan County didn't do any. Does that money come to Berkeley County if it's needed?
We can transfer it. I'm going to talk about that at the home consortium, usually way to the end of the year. The actual totals for the other area are, I thought I thought that was, yeah, the other totals for the other areas. Jefferson has 283,762, Morgan has 108,821, and the city has 279,392. There's some leftover FY '18 in Morgan and the city. So I'm kind of monitoring that, because we should probably transfer it and put it in Berkeley, so it can be spent. Because I don't want to lose that money.
Right.
Because you have like a four-year window to spend your funds.
Okay.
I had somebody that I knew that I had given a reference to, and they said they tried several times to get ahold of your office, and they live in Morgan County, and were unable to do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I always tell people the best way to get in touch with me is email, because I get tons of phone calls. So I cleaned out my phone messages, because I had a public hearing last night, so I didn't. I'm working with a lady.
They said they called you several times and didn't get a return call.
I'm working with a Lauren Morgan, like a Lauren that's in Morgan right now. It's working with Homespire here in Martinsburg.
All right.
If you get their name, I can, I'll make sure I call them back.
Yeah, I don't know. It's been, it's been a few months ago that they were trying to do that. They were trying to help their, she was trying to help her daughter get a place.
Okay, I did talk to a person that was helping her daughter. Maybe it works for the government, or it's helping her daughter.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah, I can try to, I, you know, circle back with that.
Okay. Is there anything else for the public hearing, Nancy?
Is there any other comments or questions?
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak out on the public hearing?
Nancy, what do you anticipate, do you have an anticipation of what funding will look like next year?
No, I'm waiting for that.
Okay.
We're telling the gentleman about that, that we haven't gotten our actual allocation yet. We have our proposed, we always, what was in the public hearing was what we did last year. So I'm waiting. I talked to my HUD rep, and it was approved, you know, Congress approved the money a couple weeks ago. They just haven't sent the money out. Usually what they do is they end up giving us one year, like this past year, we got 508,000 in home funds. So that might go down to like four something. Usually it goes higher in the home one year, and then the next year it goes a little higher in the CDBG to kind of alternate.
And I know in years past, we had to set aside some money for a CHODO?
Yeah, we still do that, and that's 15%. And we have a Bing, we have a lot of money in that, because Habitat has, is the only certified CHODO. I'm actually meeting a gentleman tomorrow that was in Jefferson County that wants to do a home for the disabled. So I'm going to give him the CHODO information. But anybody that wants to do anything for, you know, homes or something like that, they can start a CHODO. You know, I've met with several different organizations to try to get them to do CHODO, because for CHODO funds, we have.
I know in years past, we had a hard time, when I was on the consortium, we had a hard time using that.
We have 472,000 available in CHODO funds.
What are those being used for?
It's for affordable housing, and right now it's Habitat, and they have Auburn Dale, which is the development in Martinsburg. And it's come to a standstill, because there was some asbestos fum, so they have to apply for brownfields, and they're going through all that. And that could take up to five years. So I'm working with HUD to try to get them to switch that to, and we'll talk about it at our home consortium meeting. But we would like to have them switch it to an existing property. So, because they have a homeowner, and, you know, we're supposed to promote affordable housing. So we try to do something else. So that might be a good way, if that works, that we could do some of that more. Because if we could do some of that more, we could do it throughout all three counties with Habitat. And it would be a lot easier, because Mayor Abby from Popple called me on one of four applications for the rehabilitation loan program. And I told her we didn't have that program yet. But she said, as soon as we get it, let her know, because she's got several houses up there. And then on the same, in Jefferson, you know, everybody wants rehabilitation funds, because, you know, housing.
And last, well, not last public hearing, but I have to have.
Let me go ahead, let me go ahead and make a motion and go ahead and then to open the public hearing, just so.
Okay, sure.
So I need a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, the motion carries, okay, now we're all.
Just for the record, it was properly advertised and publication publication.
All right.
We missed that from you last week.
When you wasn't here, Mr. Mine didn't do that, and then he had to go back. Now, my boss would say this, I better say this.
It was rookie mistake.
It was.
He actually said you would say that.
I would.
All right, Ms. Strahan.
Okay, thanks. So this is our fourth public hearing. I've been to Morgan, Jefferson, and then you. Usually I start out with you all, so.
Right.
Ended up, so then I can give you the use of the other areas and the city. So we've begun the process to prepare our one-year annual plan for the use of these funds and to receive public input. Home is the largest federal block grant program to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. The city has, Martinsburg has been participating with the home program since 2007. We have received 6.6 million in housing assistance for the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley County, Jefferson County, and Morgan County. And as you know, we predominantly do the first-time home buyers program. And this past year, creating gap financing for people to purchase their first home. This past year, we did 22 first-time home buyers in the city of Martinsburg, Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan. Last year it was 25. We did 12 in Berkeley County, up from the year before, the year before it was 10. Then six in the city of Martinsburg. There's a lot of activity in the city of Martinsburg. Last year there was three. Four in Jefferson. Last year there was 10 over there. And then there wasn't any activity in Morgan. Last year there was two. We're having some problems with the affordability of the houses that investors are going in and buying a lot of the housing stuff. Historically, we have assisted 328 first-time home buyers in the eastern panhandle. Our 4.5 million F-HAP loans has leveraged 43 million in home sales and 39 million in first mortgage loans. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about the 12, because I know you always like to know. The houses range from 140,000, 170,000, 172,146 in Enwood, 155,000 and 160,000 in Hedgesville. Two houses actually went for 165, 183, and 211,806 throughout the county. So the highest home this time was 211. I checked, medium sales prices for Berkeley County is now going at 299,000. The HUD allowable housing cost for existing homes is 196. And for new construction, it's 243, and this is just in Berkeley County. We actually have 260,128 dollars available in the HAP loan fund for Berkeley County.
So Nancy, we've had this discussion before, since Jefferson County only done fours to 10 last year, and Morgan County didn't do any. Does that money come to Berkeley County if it's needed?
We can transfer it. I'm going to talk about that at the home consortium, usually way to the end of the year. The actual totals for the other area are, I thought that was, yeah, the other totals for the other areas, Jefferson has 283,762, Morgan has 108,821, and the city has 279,392. There's some leftover FY '18 in Morgan and the city. So I'm kind of monitoring that, because we should probably transfer it and put it in Berkeley, so it can be spent, because I don't want to lose that money.
Right.
Because you have like a four-year window to spend your funds.
Okay.
I had a, I had somebody that I knew that I had given a reference to, and they said they tried several times to get ahold of your office, and they live in Morgan County, and were unable to do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I always tell people the best way to get in touch with me is email, because I get tons of phone calls. So I cleaned out my phone messages, because I had a public hearing last night. I'm working with a lady.
They said they called you several times and didn't get a return call.
I'm working with a Lauren Morgan, like a Lauren that's in Morgan right now. It's working with Homespire here in Martinsburg.
All right.
If you get their name, I can, I'll make sure I call them back.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, it's been, it's been a few months ago that they were trying to do that. They were trying to help their, she was trying to help her daughter get a place.
Okay, I did talk to a person that was helping her daughter. Maybe it works for the government, or it's helping her daughter.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay. But anyway, yeah, I can try to, I, you know, circle back with that.
Okay. Is there anything else for the public hearing, Nancy?
Is there any other comments or questions?
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak out on the public hearing?
Nancy, what do you anticipate, do you have an anticipation of what funding will look like next year?
No, I'm, I'm waiting for that.
Okay.
We're telling the gentleman about that, that we haven't gotten our actual allocation yet. We have our proposed, we always, what was in the public hearing was what we did last year. So I'm waiting. I talked to my HUD rep, and it was approved, you know, Congress approved the money a couple weeks ago. They just haven't sent the money out. Usually what they do is they end up giving us one year, like this past year, we got 508,000 in home funds, so that might go down to like four something. Usually it goes higher in the home one year, and then the next year it goes a little higher in the CDDG to kind of alternate.
And I know in years past, we had to set aside some money for a CHODO?
Yeah, we still do that, and that's 15%. And we have a Bing, we have a lot of money in that, because Habitat has, is the only certified CHODO. I'm actually meeting a gentleman tomorrow that was in Jefferson County that wants to do a home for the disabled, so I'm going to give him the CHODO information. But anybody that wants to do anything for, you know, homes or something like that, they can start a CHODO. You know, I've met with several different organizations to try to get them to do CHODO, because for CHODO funds, we have.
I know in years past, we had a hard time, when I was on the consortium, we had a hard time using that.
We have 472,000 available in CHODO funds.
What's, what are those being used for?
It's for affordable housing. And right now, it's Habitat, and they have Auburn Dale, which is the development in Martinsburg, and it's come to a standstill, because there was some asbestos fum. So they have to apply for brownfields, and they're going through all that, and that could take up to five years. So I'm working with HUD to try to get them to switch that to, and we'll talk about it at our home consortium meeting, where we would like to have them switch it to an existing property. So, because they have a homeowner, and you know, we're first promote affordable housing, so we try to do something else. So that might be a good way, if that works, that we could do some of that more. Because if we could do some of that more, we could do it throughout all three counties with Habitat. And it would be a lot easier, because Mayor Abby from Popo called me and wanted four applications for the rehabilitation loan program. And I told her we didn't have that program yet. But she said, as soon as we get it, let her know, because she's got several houses up there, and then on the same, and Jefferson, you know, everybody wants rehabilitation funds, because, you know, the housing stock is older and needs some, some help. So that's another thing that we can continue to look at going forward. So if Habitat could do that, it would be a good kind of test to see if, you know, we have a group that would be, have the capacity to do it. So we're hoping to do that. But yeah, we have funds, and then we also have 1.8 million dollars that we received in the ARPA money. And I haven't even been able to touch that yet, because we have, trying to get some of these other funds back.
Okay, the question earlier was, was there anybody here from the public that wanted to speak at the public hearing? Okay, since there is none, yeah, pertaining to this, this particular.
Thank you for your presentation, ma'am. No, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so at that time, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor, the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, the motion carries. Okay, Nancy, so now we have a resolution for physical year 2022.
Right.
To adopt, right?
Right.
Anything you want to touch on that before we do that?
No. This is just for the year. You did it this summer, I believe it was, or spring, for that three years. But we still have to do each year in the year.
The county was a founding member of, of the home consortium, and it has been very successful.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right. And you're very active.
Right. All right, so entertain a motion for the resolution, physical year 2022 home investment partnership program.
So moved.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, the motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy.
Do you have a card? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nancy. All right, next on our agenda is board and commission interview with James Marshall III, candidate for Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority. Good morning, James.
Good morning.
Come on up to the podium and tell us a little, a little bit about yourself and, and why you're here to want to become, looking to be a member on the Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority.
I moved up here about six years ago. I've become more ingrained in the community. Well, I guess I actually moved up here about four years ago. I started coming up here about six years ago, our new office. Started becoming more ingrained in the community. Became the general counsel for the airport authority. And I started working with the MRB Foundation. Moved our office downtown about a year and a half ago. And basically, now it's a chance for me to do a little bit of public service that I haven't had the opportunity to do before.
Okay. All right, we'll just go down the room, the people ask you questions and stuff like that, answer, and, and we don't do, right now, don't have any vacancies. I have two coming up, so, Mr. Martinhardt.
Why the answer?
Because there's space available right now. And I've also met Mr.
Costello.
Mr. Costello before, and enjoyed conversing with him, came and spoke to our Rotary meeting in the Sunrise Rotary. He came, spoke three weeks ago, I think, and enjoyed what he had to say. Sounds like something that I can contribute to. I've got a pretty vast legal experience, working in the emergency response field. Not that I would ever step on Anthony's toes or anything like that, but I think it's something that I can contribute to that board.
Have you raided an ambulance?
No, fortunately.
Well, the raid is going with the Ambulance Authority members, you probably will.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Sorry to say that. Don't want to scare you off.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah. All right, Dan?
Jim, appreciate you offering some of your time, and your time is valuable. You're, you've been a great asset to the airport over the, over the past, when you said six years, I was thinking, it seemed like it wasn't six years ago, but four years I'm buying into that.
Yeah, my, my first trip up here was actually six years ago on St. Patrick's Day. I came up here to check out the office space and spent the night and went back. I officially moved here in April 2018. I think we became general counsel for the airport authority two months before that. But I had started looking for property by that time.
Right, well, like I say, I think you're, I think you're capable. I know you've had some, some experience in conversations out at the airport with the medical facility that's out there.
Sure.
I think, I think you'd be a great asset. Appreciate you wanting to get involved.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittaker. Like Dan, I've had the opportunity, actually, we kind of officially met at Sunrise many years ago.
Yeah.
And then, then we had a 40th birthday party that we celebrated together.
Yeah, and I've been to a few of the crab feasts out at.
Yes, indeed, yeah, so. It'd be an excellent choice if he so decides to want to continue with the ambulance authority, so. No questions for me, just a comment. Thank you.
Mr. Gokener?
I just, you know, I was scrubbing down through your application, you know, I'm sitting there thinking, that, that level of knowledge and expertise coming to already a strong board will just raise it to the next level. You know, so we have people of your abilities that are reaching out to the parts of other boards. It's always a good thing, so. Truthfully, I don't have any questions for you. I do thank you for applying, and we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
I met with Jeff and Mr. Nick Deal after the airport a couple weeks ago. We had a nice discussion, and we talked about the emergency ambulance, ambulance authority, I should say, and found James to give, we had a good discussion about it. And I know that the airport authority has been very happy with your, you being there representing them, and some of your people that you associate with have had regards for. So I do think, same as Mr. Gokener, I think it's, this is another, I think that board is well-diversed. Sad to say, we've lost, you know, we're losing quite a few members, but I think you can add to that and, and look forward to that. So I think we have some vacancies coming up in the very near future, and look to appoint some people to those positions.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time. Good to see you.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, next on our agenda is our in-house attorney, Jeff Muzzi. Did I pronounce your?
Yes.
Deputy Legal Director, order for Board of Review and Equalization.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We, last year, Anthony prepared, I believe, individual orders for each of the adjustments in the property books that took place during the Board of Review and Equalization. This year, we thought it would be maybe better to try to do it all in one, so that people don't have to track down various different orders. And also, the fact that there were some issues with the property books actually being printed, and then there was Mr. Poland, who had started to have a hearing on one, but then ultimately withdrew, withdrew his efforts there. So I just tried to combine it all into one. In order to get it not microscopic tight on that chart, I left the property owners' names out, but I think it works anyway, because it connects exactly to the piece of property that needs.
To the description of the property. Do you have the, the names of the people?
I do have them.
With you now?
Not with me now.
Okay, because I, I just want, I'm thinking that we may want to have the reading of the names and make sure, I don't think any of us had any issues, ethical issues with voting on it, but I would like to make sure.
Okay. The other thing that I thought, I mean, if you wanted me to, I could also prepare the individual ones for the changes, as we did last year, in addition to this, and that way.
I don't think we have to, I mean, as long as you and Anthony feel that this is the legal way to do it, I think it's fine, but I think at the same time, we, we really need to make sure that we're not voting on something that we had.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring that with me, but technically, there's no requirement in the code that there even be an order for these. There is one for the Board of Assessment, but not necessarily for this.
Okay.
But if you want me to come back next week, I can.
Well, let me, let me take Allen Davis's recommendation, you go get those names if you can and come right back.
All right.
All right. All right, all right, we're going to move on to Allen Davis County magistrate bid recommendation for physical, physical audit is the first one.
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, for about six months now, we've been attempting to obtain an independent audit of our fiscal year 2021 financial statements. You received the financial statements from Cox Holiday a couple weeks ago. Everything is in order. We've gone out for proposals twice before this particular RFP soliciting proposals, and never received a proposal. Either the firms were busy, they were understaffed, or we were just simply too big. Perry and Associates has done our audit, our independent financial audit for a number of years through a clerical error. They did not make the list of, originally it was 32 approved CPA firms on the previous two proposals or previous two RFPs. In 2022, the auditor's list, the auditor revised the list, and instead of 32 approved firms, there's now 35 approved firms, and Perry and Associates did get their paperwork in. So at the direction of the state auditor's office, working with Michelle Hodge, who's the audit procurement manager, we did go back out for bid for a third time. We received eight responses declining the bid. However, Perry and Associates did submit a bid in the amount of $32,750. As you can see from the read ahead, their charge for the fiscal year 1920 audit was $32,450. So it's only an increase of $300. In addition to, as you know from conversations that we've had in years past, the state auditor's office, they do charges an 8% processing fee, just to approve our, our audit contract, which we've already received approval from the state if we decide to move forward. So their fee would be $2,620, so that the total cost of our fiscal year 2021 audit would be $35,370, with a completion date of no later than May 15. Your budget for the current fiscal year for this audit is $50,000, so it falls well within budget.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the bid for, from Perry and Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose, the motion carries. I'm going to go back just one second on the, the Board of Review and Equalization, Anthony. I've been thinking about this, and this is, this is done on different days through Board of Review and Equalization, and you're asking us to sign a document that we may not been here on that particular meeting? So I think it's going to be better for us to have individuals instead of a group, because we're going to, we can't approve something that we wasn't here.
Yeah, the minutes themselves are probably sufficient. There was no hearing on it. I mean, if there were, we're on that specific hearing.
One was withdrawn. But, yeah, last year, we did this kind of individually.
Yeah, but you understand, if we, if we voted on that and took action on that, that day, and there's three of, out of the five here, how can the two that was absent sign and say we approved?
I understand.
Okay. So you might want to let Jeff know that we, we need, I feel uncomfortable about signing this.
Okay.
So let's do individuals.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. All right, Allen Davis. All right, next one, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Bid recommendation for law enforcement pursuit related to police package pickup truck.
If you don't mind, I'll do all the vehicles at one time, since I have them on one memo.
I have no issues.
All right. The council approved previously the addition of seven compact SUVs to be assigned to our permits and engineering department. We will be taking the vehicles, the, the slightly used vehicles that are assigned to that department, and we're going to reassign those to our deputy reserves. And then we're going to take the deputy reserve vehicles, which are primarily the old Ford Crown Dicks, we're going to tow them out of service and, and sell them as part of service lines. You also authorize seven, I'm sorry, five law enforcement pickup trucks, the police responder four-by-fours, four black, one silver, and replacement, and this is part of next year's, actually part of next year's, it was part of next year's budget discussion. You approved two additional vehicles for facilities, and when we put the bid out, it was for a 6.5-foot bed or an eight-foot bed. So as a result of the, the RFP that was put out, you did open the bids last Thursday, March 17. We did have certification, publication on file. You received, you received three bids for the compact SUVs, one bid for the law enforcement police pursuit pickup trucks, and four bids for the facilities pickup trucks. Gary and I reviewed the bids this past week. All appear to be in order. Therefore, we're recommending that the, the purchase of the seven compact SUVs, that the purchase of those vehicles be awarded to Whiteside of St. Clairsville, who proposed 2023 Chevrolet Trailblazers, four-door, all-wheel-drive, $23,000 each, $161,000 total. The five law enforcement pickup trucks, we only received one bid from Hagerstown Ford, 2022 F-150 police responder four-by-fours, with a five-and-a-half-foot bid, 38,520 each, or 192,600 for all five. And then we're recommending that we purchase two eight-foot bed pickup trucks from Keystone Ford. Low bid was $37,075 each, or $74,150, for a total of all 14 vehicles of $427,750. That does not include the outfitting expenses. The money, after looking at our lease payments that are required for the rest of this year, I'm recommending that if you approve the recommendation that, because, for example, the two pickup trucks are available almost immediately, as well as the compact SUVs, recommending that we encumber that money in the current year's budget and just pay, just pay cash as we go.
All right.
Can you refresh my memory? Why, why was the, why were we doing five pickups for the sheriff's department?
No, it's not five.
Yes, we're, we're doing five.
Yeah, there is five.
The silver one is, will be assigned to the sheriff. He thinks there's more versatility with some pickup trucks, only because of the dive team and the swap team.
Hauling gear.
It's easier to haul the gear and, and things like that.
I got you.
I don't think that the intent is to migrate to exclusively to pickup trucks, but we had one awarded, which we haven't received that one yet, but these, these additional five would give us a little bit more versatility.
I think that'd be critical for, for actually patrolling, most people won't, I mean, I've came up on sheriff vehicles and stuff, it's pickups that you never even think that they're going to pick up.
Well, if you, you know, the, since I live so close to CNO Canal, I see the Maryland Department of Natural Resources quite a bit. They have pickup trucks, as well as the National Park Service, and they're marked, and they have light bars on them. You're right, until they're on top of you, you don't even know that.
Right. All right, so entertain a motion for, uh, Mr. Davis's recommendation on all vehicles.
Like motion, we accept county administrator's recommendation for the cumulative amount of purchasing all fourteen vehicles for the amount of four hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, which does not include outfitting.
But it does include delivery.
Forty dollars to all.
Delivery.
Okay. Have a motion on Florida. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right, um, let's go back up to, uh, Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management, acquisition, acquisition of mass casualty unit. We're done. Mr. Y.
Yeah, but we're getting ready to break into, so you might as well stay.
All right. Mr. Lilly, you have, and Ambulance Authority is making a recommendation that we take ownership of a vehicle.
Uh, yes. Uh, it is actually owned by the state of West Virginia.
Right.
Uh, just like our Mas, Hazmat ninety and Director of Emergency Management, also where, uh, partner for that relationship there. The county does maintain, operate and maintain the Hazmat ninety, and currently the, the ambulance authority maintains and operates the mass casualty units. Unfortunately, the state has not provided any funding for maintenance or operation for these units.
So, so I guess the thing is, uh, we'll take ownership at zero cost?
Yes.
Okay, so, and, and we're maintaining anyway, so.
We, well, we haven't been maintaining.
Well, the Ambulance Authority has.
Berkeley County Mercy Ambulance Authority has been. And recently, the ambulance authority has put in quite a sum of money into that unit, getting it back up to, being able to be operable. So currently, the, the truck and the trailer is in excellent shape. The only thing the trailer is in is the tires, the weather crack.
We want to get things replaced pretty quickly.
Yes, we would be then responsible for the maintenance.
Yeah, I know. They want to sign over the responsibility of both of them.
But it's, it's a very valuable asset for the county. Uh, there, there is a lot of equipment on, on this, this, these units that is, in the, in the event of a disaster, would be very advantageous for us to have a mobile hospital, some cots, some backboards. There's a lot of hard equipment on there.
And our intent is not to cut the trailer.
No.
Maintain it for what it is.
We want to maintain it. Now, could we use it for some other things, such as the trailer being used as a command unit? In the event of a disaster, absolutely. It has an onboard generator, has heat and AC system, which all of that stuff the ambulance authority just recently replaced with all some onings and jacks and stuff on it, so. It, it has its purpose, and there, and there is some very valuable equipment on that unit in the event that we would need it.
So where are we going to store that? We're already stored.
Down at eight oh two.
It's stored outside?
Yes, currently. The trailer is, the truck is stored inside.
Right.
The ambulance authority was storing that, and then when they did renovations at the nine-eight station, we brought it to our location so that the contractors could get in there and do their work. It's just, it's just.
So is there room to get the trailer inside too?
We, our bays are not long enough for the trailer.
Doesn't make sense to buy one of them, them little metal roof structures to be.
Carport stuff?
Yeah, one of them. I mean, they're not very expensive, but they would save extended life, enormous amount of time.
What about the, what about where the handicap ramp is? Did we make that into a garage?
It's not deep enough. There is a mezzanine in there.
I know.
It's not.
Mezzanine's too high.
Yeah, the mezzanine is too low, so it wouldn't go under the mezzanine.
Right.
That, that trailer will actually fit in there, Ren, but it, you've gotta walk sideways, and you can't get behind it at all. Yeah. You hit it hard enough, hit it go. Kind of a deal. But it, there's, there's no room to get in front of it, beside it. You can't maintain it, you know, truthfully. An inexpensive carport-type roof over would give it a lot more life. Just because with, with an inside, you can't get around.
And I, I think I'm correct in saying that, you know, also did some work on the roof as well, so resealed as such?
We did. We did about fourteen thousand dollars repair down at Wagner's. Uh, everything was resealed, a new ECU, a new generator, electrical system. Everything but the tires was redone. Uh, it was a whole cost of fourteen thousand to get it up to speed. One of the reasons we did that was at that time, we were doing a lot of COVID testing at the high schools, and the weather got cold, so we figured we could utilize it as a command post to get people in and out. The unfortunate piece is, when you look at the MOU that was provided back in two thousand and four, it put a lot of responsibility on the owner, but not a whole lot of ability to do anything with it. You had to consistently ask for permission. So our big thing is the staffing, training, and keeping those things. But our, our piece is, is we got it up to what we think is about as good as we can get it back to before we say, we just can't maintain this equipment, can you guys take it back?
So I guess the question is, is it, is this to take over full ownership from the Ambulance Authority and the state of West Virginia?
Well, it's always belonged to, to Homeland Security. And then there was an MOU in June of two thousand and four, signed by Steve Turfle and Howard Strauss to take on that, that unit into the county. But it is owned by the state, and based on MOU, the state determines pretty much how you deploy the assets.
So it's still gonna, so it's still gonna be?
It'll still be licensed under the state.
State of West Virginia.
They take, they pay for the license and registration of the insurance insurance vehicles. That's the thing. There's no maintenance.
All right.
Now, we still want to, and we still will, partner with the ambulance authority. So in the event that we do have to deploy that, we're still gonna lean on the ambulance authority for staffing and things like that, because that's not what we do. So that partnership is still gonna be there.
So your request to the council is not to take ownership, so we're not gonna physically transfer the title.
At this time.
At this time, but to take responsibility for many things.
Yes.
It's an asset that was given to us, so.
Well, when Randy and I talked about it, uh, two or three weeks ago, that's what I thought too. And the nicest, the ambulance authority would put new tires on before they tried.
We can make that part of criteria.
It could.
Of all things, I mean, you go through and you spend fourteen thousand dollars and onboard tires on, I mean, what the heck?
Going down the road, pop, pop. It sounded like popcorn.
It actually looked good when you look at them from a distance.
I'll be the first to say it was missed in our assessment.
Yeah, the trash.
It's just some, some weather cracks in them, and my experience pulling trailers or weather-cracked trailers, my experience has not been good.
Nah, nah.
I can tell you, that's a deal breaker. I'll take it back to you, boys. It's got some good tires.
I think we can forward that, Brad.
Like, with the, with the truck, um.
Ten ply.
That's really a good piece of equipment there for you all.
Has minimal mileage. I believe that's O three, O four, something like that. Yeah, the ambulance agency.
Huh? I seen that.
Now, now that truck.
Crotchman's companion.
It has exterior lighting. It has an onboard generator as well, uh, the power pickup driven generator on that truck as well. So it has a generator as well as the trailer has a generator.
And all that stuff's been kept up, serviced, everything's guarded.
Actually, the generator we used during our safety days.
Okay.
Was allowed into the public. We run it for four or five hours at the top.
So I'm one of them ones, if we take ownership of it, everything has to work and be ready to go, especially for emergency vehicle.
We have personally, our office, we have personally went out and played with it, started things up, that makes sure everything shows. The only thing I see in the truck is a fuel gauge. It says, it's being, I think, fuel gauge is operating properly, but other than that, I think.
And you're gonna keep the backboards and everything else in it, just in case.
Our intent is to keep that hard equipment in there, the stuff that doesn't expire. Now, I know the ambulance authority kept some supplies on there, like saline and things like that. Now, we, we can't do that. But the, the hard supplies, such as the cots, the backboards, the mobile hospital, maybe even be a decon tent.
A couple of heaters.
Yeah, there's some heaters. So yes, we want to keep all that stuff intact and operational, so in the event that we would need it, we have the resources.
Any, uh, the tires on the truck's good shape? I mean, not out, they're not, how old are they? Did, did you read them?
No.
Cause I mean, if they're.
Did not check the date, so yeah, if they're over ten years old, they're probably.
See, originally, this truck was under, uh, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the county originally.
Right.
And, and then, you know, as time moved, uh, the ambulance authority, uh, thought that was, you know, better for their use. So they, they took the truck and the trailer for a while, and now it's coming back where it kind of started from.
This is part of the assets the state distributed out. And there was units in, nine units distributed across the state, all nine regions. Uh, there was the, the Hazmat ninety, the mass casualty truck and trailer. These were all things that came out after nine eleven. And I think, I think it was like in two thousand and three or four that these assets came to the counties, or each region. Berkeley County just happened to be the county selected in our region to maintain, to house that. Just through the, a lot of grant funding and council funding, we have been able to upgrade a lot of the Hazmat ninety equipment, like the meters and stuff that we recently purchased, you know, we got a lot of grant funding and also council funding as well. So the Hazmat ninety truck is, it's in tip-top shape. It's in pretty good shape where it needs to be. And what the ambulance authority has done with these two units last year, uh, as a whole, these units are, are in really good shape.
Well, I definitely would like to see it be kept inside. Um, so I don't know if there's any, any cooperation with any of the volunteer fire stations to put it in one of the stations or not, but, um.
Currently, we ha- house Hazmat ninety, Station Twenty now.
Right.
Follow up with Company Twenty to see if there is a room in there to put that trailer in there.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be very beneficial for us to do that. And I'm for tires on the truck and the trailer if they're out there, if they're too long, because, I mean, you're talking about a vehicle that's, when it's needed, it's gonna be needed, and, and if it's needed. And it's an emergency vehicle, so I would, I don't want it to fail because of tires.
And that will require a little bit of confusion in the central branch, just so the council's aware, which I can take care of, but.
Yeah.
Gary, I know Gary does have.
I got some nice twenty years police intercept.
Huh?
I got some nice twenty, twenty years police intercept tires up there.
Yeah, right. Um, all right, so, um, it's not really, so it's not something that we're looking to take ownership of, of, uh, what would be the terminology? We're wanting to.
We will be, it's cost-wise, we will be taking them.
So we're still, we actually just gotta, we, we also have to go to the state and ask us, ask permission?
I have already contacted the state, uh, and with the letter that the ambulance authority has provided, is what the state had requested from us and acceptance from the council, uh, then it comes back to us.
Okay.
The state is accepting.
Doesn't make sense. Does it make more sense just to get in, uh, in one of these, um, carports or something? That way you can keep it at the same place as the truck?
I'd like for both of them to be at the same place. I was looking for the truck and the trailer to be hooked up, ready to go at one, that may be a cooperative fire station or substation, if that's even possible. I thought it was housed there at the substation there in Pike Side for a while.
It was in and out. Whenever they needed something, we'd have to go get it, pull it down. The trailer was always outside of Station ninety, off to the south corner. And we kept the fire up there, I really. But the truck itself, sometimes it was at nine-eight, and sometimes it was at twenty-nine.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll, we'll be, we'll deal with that here soon. But I think the, the director, I guess we need to approve the action. I'm not so sure the terminology that we want to use.
I think if the record just reflects the consent of the council.
Take on the responsibility.
Take on the responsibility. And we can make that a part of the minutes, so the minutes.
Just the direction that we all agree.
Yes, sir.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
All right, that the minutes reflect that everybody's going yes and no. Yes, yes. No, no's. All right.
By unanimous consensus.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We do have executive session coming in, so.
But you have executive sessions.
Ides from the public. Ma'am, do you have some ides from the public? State your name for the record, if you would, please.
Stephanie Phillips, AKA Schlepo, daughter of Lusa, military Marine Corps family, and mother of Danielle.
Okay.
Good day, council members. I apologize for arriving late this morning. I have a progress report of my civil service attempts to help my community, and I do want to state that I get misinformed quite a bit, so take with what I say a grain of salt. Item one, I have requested from the state Capitol to provide the flag that is missing at the Board of Education, school fortification building. I've requested from the Governor's Office of Maryland and Virginia to provide National Guard members to regional jails to provide additional safety and security for staff and those incarcerated, since it appears the streets have been swept and people have been detained. These employed, uh, people in the contraband network in the area appear to have been, golly, I am not doing well right now, excuse me. I'm gonna adlet this. My comments amounted to about three minutes and fifty-five seconds. The streets appear to have been clean, and this creates a great deal of potential security for staff and those incarcerated in the regional jails, as the area seems to be transitioning to Civil War tourism and increasing property values. I've also notified law enforcement in Washington and Berkeley County that I have, may have pertinent information relating to an accidental death that may not have been an accident that relates to the contraband distribution network. I've requested from new item, the Day Report Center, to help renovate your twelve-step meeting hall on Martin Street. National security interests are priority one.
We don't have a.
I have asked for more information on how excessive land development affects flood, flood plains, and food supplies for regional residents with less local, small, and medium farms. My background of employment is in public safety, primarily as it relates to water. I am also a mother of a child who was educated from pre-K through twelve in Berkeley County and a state college in West Virginia. I've inquired about safety training of schoolagers and updates on the reinstatement of the Berkeley County Scholarship Pageant. I do need more information before I can comment on how I can best serve our community on these matters. And last but not least, from a broader economic, national security perspective, with all due respect, affordable housing situations need to be addressed at a national level and could be improved. How fortunate you have several board members with real estate backgrounds. This needs to be addressed because our baby boomers are transitioning to senior citizens, and our current economy is challenging even for some college graduates. As a former employee, well-respected, associated with the Marriott Corporation and the corporate headquarters in Martin Marietta, I'd be happy to provide, although, happy to provide, but I need further assessment of this situation, some suggestions. I'm gonna wait about thirty days if you and you all have some information you'd like to provide for me before I make any public comments. In the meantime, why don't we all put our heads together and see what we can come up with?
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, anybody else?
Sugar might be a little low.
Anybody else on the public? Anybody else on the public? If not, seems like there's a need to go in executive session for potential.
State and potential legal.
Okay. Motion to debate.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We are in executive session.
You can see my partner, his chief of staff, sticking her head out.
We're out of executive session. There will be no action taken. So Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honors?
I might as well. We'll do recess.
All right, we are recessed.